Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'll call a regular meeting of the Buchanan City Council order. Ask that you join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We respect the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amanda Hay.
Good evening. I'm here tonight as a member of UKare, Upsher Community Alcohol Reduction Network, and we just wanted to announce our summer pool party schedule. These pool parties came about as a result of community forums we had with high school students who said they wanted more activities to do. And so what we strive to do is offer safe drug and alcohol free events, one in the fall, one in the spring, and then the pool parties during the summer. This year, our pool parties are going to be June 16th, July 21st, and August 18th with high school students, and the time is from eight to 11:00 p.m. The admission is $2, and that covers swimming, food, and music. We have DJ Brad Allen. And our middle school pool party is Saturday, July 7th. The time for that is from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. The admission is $2, and again, that covers food, swimming, and music. For the second year, we're also going to partner with the Buchanan Police Department for National Night Out in August, and you'll hear more about that from the police later on. But that will be our family night. These pool parties attract an average of 100 high school students and middle school students, even more than that, and we're really excited that we're able to do this, and we appreciate the support of the community, Upsher County Commission, Buchanan City Council. We have a lot of support from the police department and also from Stocker Youth Center. There's a lot of volunteers that give up their time to join these events and to help chaperone, and we'd invite you to come up for any of these and check out what happens. So, thank you very much.
Have any questions for him? Thank you, Amanda. Winston Moore.
When did you all move the dump from Mudlick Road to Barber Street?
I don't believe we did.
Well, 'cause I think we only went pretty clean it up then, don't you?
Where are you talking about?
I was talking to them about three hours up there. It looks like the city dump moved in there.
What grasses are there, do you know? It's on Barber Street?
Yeah, it's on Barber Street. That one there on the corner, everybody knows where that is at. But they tell me that old lady's in a nursing home now. So now you can quit babying her around and clean that place up. That one there on the corner, Barber and Richie.
We'll have to make the cleanup property sometime again.
Well, I need you to go up right there, get the two-ton truckload of land over here in my house. And that there, that building, he built on the back of that thing? I was told that he got a building to live for that. It's ridiculous.
Mr. Moore, we'll have to look into it. I don't know what to tell you right now. I know that there's-
'Cause everybody that lives in this town knows where that house is at.
I think I know where the house is, yes.
And they know what the people's putting up with right there. That's where we moved the dump back down on Mudlick. It's cleaner down there than it is over there.
Yeah, we haven't been dumping those things Mudlick for a while. That's been closed, so, yeah.
Well, the weather's cleaner there. But anyway, the city dump looks like it's over on Barber Street.
We'll look into it.
I appreciate you.
And you're at 116 Barber yourself, right?
Right. That's all I need. Thank you.
I'd like to say something in support of Mr. Moore there. I live on Barber Street too, and the place on the corner has been, as far as I'm concerned, it's a health hazard in addition to being unsightly. I have actually seen rats as much as nine, 10 inches long coming out of that house, and roaches crawling almost across the road. I don't know what the problem is. I've talked to Rich Clemmons about it before, the zoning officer, and he says there are problems in getting all these laws enforced.
He don't enforce none of them, that zoning officer. He's a joke.
But I will support him in the fact that that place does need to be cleaned up, and it's a health hazard. I don't know how the people live in the brick house beside it standing.
We'll get down there and try to do something.
I'll be along with you, Greg.
Excuse me?
Okay. Thank you.
That brings us to department reports. Michael.
You have, yeah, for consideration tonight, Resolution 2012-04. It's what you're all familiar with. It's our final budget revision for general fund for fiscal year 11, 12. On the next pages, you'll see the actual request for revision that we have to submit to the auditor. The overall increase in revenues is $19,900. Of course, balancing that out expenditures is $19,900, and you can see the various programs and departments that are affected by that. The charges and other entities is actually broke down. Those are revenues and fees that have surpassed revenue expectations and expenses for stalker youth for basketball, karate, and zumba. So those are revisions for those programs. Again, they've collected more than they've spent, so we're making revisions to that. There's also a revision for hotel motel tax and the dispersments of that between the parks at 40% and the hotel motel for CVB at 60%. You'll also see revisions for expenditures in several of those offices. Again, this is something that we do every year. We're not over budget in anything that we're running on. We just need to do some housekeeping with our funds, and since the deadline for the auditors, I think, is the 18th, we won't have another meeting until then, so we're trying to get this to you early. So before I move any further with any other business, I'll recommend council consider accepting passing Resolution 2012-4 through a roll call vote.
Is there a motion to the doubt? In a second? So, motion made and seconded. Dave Thomas?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Mayor votes yes. It's, uh-
Okay, on the next page titled Budget Revision Line Items Transferred. These are actually just line item transfers within each department. They do not need approval by the state auditor because they're made within each department, but they do need to have approval for council before those can be entered in. You'll see all those departments that are affected by that. There seems like quite a few, but all of those departments stay within their budget. Their appropriations, just some lines expend more than other lines, but overall, they're still well within their department budgets for appropriations for 2011 and 12. No roll call vote necessary, but do need council approval to accept the budget line item revisions as presented.
Motion.
I'll move.
Second? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion or question on the matter? Understand, we're approving budget revisions.
Line items.
Line item revisions. All in favor of the motion, signify, so to say. I oppose no. I have it.
And the next several other pages are just the revisions that were approved to go to the state auditor, as well as the line item transfers cleaning up all of those departments and general fund, for your information. Just a few more items, if you will. I have the financial summary report for ending May 31st, 2012. Our revenues were $3,347,292.71. Our expenses were $3,138,267.77, a net gain of $209,024.94. I did not want to overwhelm you with all of the numbers and all the printout, so I do have copies of the revenue and expense report, both in summary and both in detail. If anyone would like to take a look at that, please see me after the meeting or contact me, and I'll be sure to get you those reports. I do also want to remind council that we have scheduled the audit exit conference in regards to the 2010-2011 audit. That will be next Wednesday, June 13th, at 9:00 a.m. here at City Hall. June 13th, 9:00 a.m., City Hall, next Wednesday. All council members, of course, are encouraged to attend, and the public is also welcome for that. And finally, just want to let everyone know, after much delay in production, the street sweeper will finally be delivered tomorrow at 10:00. So hopefully, we'll be able to see that if council's able to come take a look at that. Maybe we can have the paper, the picture of it, but that's what I have with the street sweeper. I believe Lowell Smith is going to present a little bit more on the street sweeper during his presentation, so I'll say that. Thank you, Michael.
Who else? Any questions for Michael? Chief Tacy.
A couple. We're getting ready to start our annual post-testing beginning of the next couple of weeks. The junior firefighter camp starts the 23rd of June through 28th of June. For those of you who don't know, that's a camp that's held for junior firefighters at the State Fire Academy at Jackson's Mill. We always furnish, normally furnish them some equipment and also some manpower, so I think we'll probably have some guys going down there to help out. Also, the volunteer fire department is sponsoring two junior firefighters to attend that camp. I think they have now over 100 kids, junior firefighters registered at that camp. I think the age is from 14 to 16, I believe. No, I'm sorry, 14 to 17. And I think they have approximately 125 or better students currently registered. So we always enjoy going down there to help with that. We're continuing our weekly training sessions. We're trying to have training at least once a week. And we have one more pumper and a rescue truck to get out of our safety inspection system. We'll face those this month, and that will, all of our trucks will be in service and have your annual safety inspection going on. Had a few maintenance issues, but we're handling them as they come, so that's all I have. Any questions?
Question for Mitch.
Thank you.
Jay Holland, City Engineer.
I don't have a lot to report tonight. That doesn't mean a lot, stuff's not going on, but on the Gateway East Enhancement Project, I was really hoping to have a report from Charleston as to whether we've been approved or not on the project. Still haven't heard anything. I left messages yesterday and today with Mark Scholler regarding that project. Met with a couple of property owners today regarding some driveway concerns. They were worried that they weren't going to be able to access their garages with the new sidewalks and design, and Lowell and I went down, and, you know, we'll be okay. We'll be fine. And also met with a couple of property owners regarding some retaining walls, whether, you know, when we come through with the new sidewalks, if they wanted repairs made to their retaining walls. We could do that at the property owner's expense, and they're going to get back with me, so what I think I'll do is just send a letter out to everybody that's affected and asking, you know, do they want to be included with the repairs, yes or no? On the Army National Guard, really good news, I think. The Guards Civil Engineer wanted to verify our flow data that we conducted on January 10th with our department. They came up today, we flow tested, and the results were within 5% of what we flow tested, you know, in January, so we're really good. Approximately 1,600 gallons a minute flows through that 10-inch line, or we're going to tie one, which is ample enough for what the Guards needing and their future developments, not only this phase of the project, but phases two and three. Mailed out, mailed or hand-delivered the right-of-way agreements to the nine property owners. Got four verables on yes, they just haven't been sent back to City Hall for execution. The only one we're waiting on to hear back from also is IAA, which is the auto disposal place. There's been some technical difficulties, for lack of a better word. IAA is just renting the property. They're not, they don't own it, and they thought they owned the property, so there was a couple of weeks wasted. So I'm now in contact with ADS to make sure that, you know, everything is, that they are still the property owners, and hopefully they'll contact me, and I can quickly reiterate what we're trying to do and get an executed right-of-way agreement from them. And that's really all I have. You know, there's little ones going on, but that's all I have at the moment. If anybody has any questions.
Questions for Jay? Thank you, Jay. Jerry Arnold, very ably represented by Lowell Smith, street commissioner.
Hardly able.
Jerry's one who's hardly able. He's really been down to the back.
Yeah, I talked to Jerry today. He's doing pretty good. He's got MRI scheduled for Monday. We'll know more then. I don't have a lot to say either. Farmer's Market's coming along very well. It's, if you just touch up things, we'll be done down there. The steel, we're ready to start fabricating steel for the pavilion. Little dirt work left, some lighting. We also was contacted by the West Virginia Division of Fourth Street. They are offering us a $5,000 grant to come in, take down trees under power lines that need taken down, and somewhere in the neighborhood between 25 and 30 inch, the inch and a half of trees will be replanted. There are trees that they recommend to go under power lines. This is where they have to be, is under a power line, mainly Phase 3. Those are the ones that's got the two wires up and one down on the bottom. Some of them are single-phase, so I'm going to talk with them and see if I can get some under the single-phase in a few places. Had a call with that guy today. Didn't get a chance to talk to him, but it's no expense to the city. The only expense there is, is me finding a place to put the trees, what trees we want to take down and everything. Don't know when they'll come in and take the trees down. That could be anytime after they've been notified. The planting will take place in the fall. Doing a little bit of work on the walk trail, getting shelters put up and stuff, some swings. Other than that, it's steady go with everything else. I would like to thank the city crews for all the work that they've done down at Farmer's Market and everything. It's really come together. Looks very nice.
It's coming along. They have done very good work.
As far as the sweeper, Michael, it's white. It's got six wheels. Is there anything else you want to? You hadn't been late for this meeting, you could have talked to them too. I've got information here if you would like to look at it and just treat it.
When's the parking lot going to be back?
It's open at the Farmer's Market.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the actual parking.
It's-
For the cars.
It's ready.
That's all we're having?
Yeah, that's it.
We haven't lost that many spaces. Just looks good.
Yeah, down below where the dirt, where that's all dirt, that'll be grass and trees.
Oh, I thought we were having other-
Is that what there is, 57s?
57 space. We had 68 or 69 in a ring lane, so we had lost that many spaces.
Lowell on the tree program, who's responsible for taking down the trees? Partner for?
They'll have, they'll have a contractor come in and remove those. The only thing we'll have to do is keep them watered for a certain amount of time. They have like a year guarantee with everything.
Do you need a police or fire escort for the delivery of a street sweeper?
Well, we probably could, yeah. Yeah, it would be nice. I think we might let Michael drop. You'll be golfing, so. Any other questions?
Since that's going to be green space, what's the plans for all that open area?
Well, I don't think that's really been quite decided yet.
There was that layout that we had. I don't know whether it's still up there or not.
No.
Okay. But some sidewalk and there's some walkways and some-
Yeah.
Walkways and some plantings and so on, some benches.
Sidewalks.
Are there going to be skates or something?
That's where the pavilion's at, right behind the bathrooms now. We've got the concrete poured for that, and they were finished laying the brick, pavers in.
So would there be more seating in that area? Bunches?
Not permanent seating, no.
Yeah.
If anybody would like to come down tomorrow night between 5:00 and 8:00 to Fantastic, Fabulous Fridays or whatever, I can't remember.
Festival Fridays.
Festival Fridays, yes. Between 5:00 and 8:00 tomorrow evening, that's the first one of a series of 19, and you'll be able to see exactly what's going to be happening down there with vendors and farmers and entertainment and half of the green area to sit on and enjoy the concerts.
Thank you, Lowell. Richard Clemmons is still on vacation. I understand he's out to sea somewhere. David.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Himes is away on vacation, but we have gone past the title point with our Route 20 annexation. We brought all the titles up, and I'm actually preparing petitions, so I may be asking a few of you to help me that might know certain property owners better than others, but those 28 tracks, hopefully in the next six weeks or so, will have that project at long last completed and welcome some new folks into the corporate limits. Continuing to work on actually what could end up being three new ordinances, and I have included in your packet of stuff that I distributed this evening, copies of Chapter 8, Article 12, Section 16, and then after that, 16A and also 16C. We've been talking about some of this stuff for a good while now, and it's the time to actually put the ordinances into effect. Back in 1974, the City of Buchanan adopted Ordinance 170, which we have long called the Housing Enforcement Ordinance, and the state legislature really did very little with housing enforcement issues until it became fashionable back beginning about 2008. There's some additional revisions undertaken to 8, 12, 16, and 2010 as well. What I would like the council to do is to permit me to work, particularly with the mayor and Mr. Clemmons, to revamp Ordinance 170. There's some stuff the legislature added in 2010 to 8, 12, 16 itself that I think is worthy of us revisiting Ordinance 170. After all, things have changed a little bit, 38 years. And then the two new pieces of legislation that went into effect a couple of years ago that you've heard me talk about before, you've heard Rich Clemmons talk about, is the registration of uninhabitable property, which also requires a fee to be paid by those folks who own properties who are placed on that list, on that registry. But beyond the uninhabitable property, the thinking being that with respect to vacant buildings, whether they're residential or commercial, there is an added cost, an added workload associated with municipal government looking after those kinds of properties as well. So 8, 12, 16C is a registration of vacant buildings. Now, these buildings might well be habitable, but they're empty, and there is a fee that we are permitted to assess to encourage those buildings to not be empty. We'd like to see those buildings occupied, because if they're occupied, that means something good's going on. There are utilities being used. There are people occupying it. There's work going on, commercial activity, whatever it might be. So I would like the authority of the council not to do one ordinance, but to revise Ordinance 170, the Housing Enforcement Ordinance, as well as advancing ordinances for uninhabitable properties, a registry of those, including fee assessment, and preparation of an ordinance for the registry of vacant buildings, and to contrive a schedule for fees that would be associated with that also. Again, I think it's one of these quality of life kinds of things. Certainly, the purpose underlying the possible consideration of these ordinances is not to derive revenues. That's not what it's all about. It's to realize improvements to our neighborhoods. I'd like to give council some thumbs up to proceed with that.
I think it's timely that we consider what you've said, Dave. Considering Mr. Moore's comments tonight, Tucker Street issues that we've been having as well as the other areas of our town that we've been trying to get cleaned up for. So I think it's worthwhile at least making a swab at it to make sure that we're in compliance with state law and also make something that's enforceable and gives us teeth as well.
I think it's a natural follow-up to, Mr. Preston, to the abandoned car ordinance that we put into effect last fall. We've had good production from that. If we have half of the good stuff come out of these efforts, it'd have a much improved situation. I've had a couple of new contacts about whether the city had approved the Sudden Lake programming schedule. There's one chap in particular that actually serves on our TV cable board. Mr. Offwey follows that stuff very, very closely, and I continue to tell him and to tell him to tell folks who inquire with him that, again, we do not control Sudden Lake's program. Typically, the mayor gets a letter, it's a very matter-of-fact letter, that this channel's going off, this one's coming on, and that's all there is to it. It does not require action of the TV cable board. So it is what it is relative to Sudden Lake program. I have an anticipation of your acting affirmatively on Ordinance 364 this evening. Already started preparation of the deeds with First Community Bank. I've been working on some other things too. Mayor, I'll defer to you under your comments to give council the update on the Tenney property, that there's some good progress being made with that as well. That's all I have until we get into old and new business, and then we're going to wear you out with some ordinances.
Any questions for that? Where'd Doug go?
He had to step out for just a second. He'll take a jump right back.
All right, we'll take a look at the consent agenda. It's approval minutes of regular meeting, May 24th, building and wiring permits and approval of paying the bills. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Same.
And a second, please. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion or question? If not, all in favor, signify, so to say. I oppose no. I have it. Strategic issues for discussion and vote. Asking you this evening to, I would entertain a motion to reconsider the ordinance for urban deer hunting and raise it from the table for reconsideration. Is there a motion to do that? None of you have been contacted by people who want this to be reconsidered?
I have not, but since we brought it up tonight, why don't we ask the citizens if you are interested in doing that, to contact one of the council members? And if so, we could resurrect that next time. Would that give us enough time to put the ordinance in place prior to hunting season?
Yeah, but the procedure is to, we voted in, back in the fall, to table this indefinitely, table the matter indefinitely. The parliamentary procedure associated with that is that we would have a motion to raise it from the table that does not approve the ordinance. It only brings it back to consideration. If we bring it back to consideration, I would schedule a public meeting, not here in these chambers, but somewhere else on a special day and time to consider that and that only, and probably ask Rob Sylvester to come in and make a presentation and give people an opportunity. I think there's probably 30 people that said to me, "Why didn't you pass that ordinance?" And I said to them, "Why didn't you come to the meeting?" Because overwhelmingly, the folks who came to that meeting were opposed to, two of them said, "In a room here now," and I know that. And everybody's entitled to their opinion, but I think this thing needs another look. And that's why I asked to just raise it from the table. It doesn't say we're going to do it. It simply says we're going to talk about it again.
I would make that motion to raise it from the table to talk about it, because I think it's an issue that needs to be discussed, and there are other issues aside from hunting that could be looked at, like feeding could also be part of that discussion.
Yes.
So I think it's timely to do that.
So there's a motion to raise that issue from the table. Is there a second? I'll second. Motion's made and seconded. There's nothing to discuss here. We need to bring it up or not. I want to remind council of the folks that are against it, and that I made the motion tabled indefinitely. There is a petition with-
motion table indefinitely. There is a petition with over two hundred signatures on it against it. I hate to see the ugly head buried again.
Well, Skeeter, I don't think it has to get up.
People are against it.
And there are some who are for it. I'd like to give them an opportunity to be heard, that's all.
Well, I think Scott makes a good point in regard to not looking at just the hunting, but the feeding and other issues that may be part of the whole process.
Yeah. There were other types of, at the end of the discussion, I remember we discussed other types of ways of doing that, right? Those always fall in place. Yeah, just under this discussion. So if there's a question, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of raising this issue from the table, signify. If I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
No.
Roll call. Scott?
Yes.
Skeeter?
No.
John?
Yes.
Pam?
No.
Dave?
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll bring more information on the subject back to council me at a future time. I want to back up to correspondence, please. May? I have before me, and some of you, Doug, don't you leave. Get back in here.
I just told him I'd study.
I received this letter, and I didn't send it out as I normally do to you all, because I had contacted the writer of this letter to see if I could make this public, and she gave me her permission, in fact, encouraged me to do so. It simply says, and I'm going to read it today, "Mayor Davidson, I'm sure that you're aware of the quality staff you have, but I would love to tell you how much one of your police officers made a difference in our day at the Strawberry Festival. Lieutenant Doug Loudon went beyond his duties and made our day so much brighter by extending warm, welcoming hospitality. My name is Hillary Lauder, and I live in Columbus, Indiana. My husband, Jason Lauder, is originally from Buchanan. I recently got to enjoy Buchanan Strawberry Festival for the first time. We decided to view the parade from Victoria Street. It is a quick trip back to my husband's grandparents' house, with the very likely possibility that our kids wouldn't be able to make the entire parade. My husband had warned me of the number of people that come to the parade, and that we probably wouldn't be able to get close since we were arriving late. I put our chairs out across Victoria Street, close to the police officer there. I was afraid that I was too close to the officer and would be asked to move, but instead I was welcomed to the parade by Lieutenant Loudon, who offered to turn his car off to prevent any more heat from being put out. My almost-two-year-old son became fussy as soon as we arrived. I was worried that we were going to have to leave and miss the entire parade. Lieutenant Loudon offered to let my son sleep in the back of his car. He shared that, like my blond son, his children were also fair-skinned, and the offer was also to prevent him from being sunburned. Lieutenant Loudon said that he would let us know if there was emergency and he needed to leave quickly. My son was able to get a nap, not be sunburned, and we got to enjoy one of the best parades I have ever attended. Later, my daughter was collecting candy and found a Tootsie Roll, to which she exclaimed, "Look, Mom, a Tootsie Roll," her favorite. Lieutenant Loudon went to his car and then came back and offered my daughter a handful of Tootsie Rolls. He was so generous. Lieutenant Loudon made our day. Without him, I have little doubt that we would have had to leave early. I met few people who were so welcoming while on duty and in the hot sun. The heat alone was enough to make anyone unpleasant, but he never was. He smiled and was courteous the entire parade. He made such an impact on our family that was greatly appreciated. He went far above and beyond what he was asked to do that day. Truly one of Buchanan's finest, and it's signed by Hillary Lauder. And I'm asking this to be made a part of his personnel file, and I'm asking the two representatives of the press to please publish this, if you will, as a letter. And Doug, I told you before, I appreciate you. Appreciate what you do. Appreciate what all of our employees do. But when we get this kind of an accolade, I think it's appropriate for us to share it. Thanks again, Doug. Okay, second reading, second and final reading, ordinance Three Sixty Four, First Community Bank. Yeah. It's more than I can say. Go ahead, Dave.
When I was little, we learned that the police are our friends, lawyers not so much. So, Ordinance Three Sixty Four of the city of Buchanan, an ordinance approving the city's conveyance to First Community Bank N.A., a national association of that certain locked tractor parcel of land, two hundred square feet more or less, owned by the city and being a part or portion of a public alley, in trade and exchange for that certain L-shaped strip of land containing one thousand eight hundred ninety square feet more or less, that has been or shall be developed for an expanded public alley, and a part or portion of which strip to be conveyed to the city is situated adjacent to an existing public alley sometimes referred to as Stump Lane, said strip being currently titled with First Community Bank N.A., but to be conveyed to the city, all of said real estate being situated in the city of Buchanan, Buchanan Corporation District, Upsher County, West Virginia. Last time I pointed out this map, actually a flat, that Burl Smith has prepared for us, and there was part of this that I failed to explain, and I'd like to explain tonight. In this yellow highlighted area, again, that is this new alley, not a new alley, but the new name that we learned of Stump Lane, this L-shaped area that is in sort of the pinkish-orange color, that is the property that the city will be acquiring from First Community Bank. The property to the immediate east of that is this strip that is already has been incorporated as part of First Community Bank's new parking lot that they will be getting from the city. And then there's this piece that is, just looks like a big I, that's kind of shaded in the diagonal black lines. That is a strip of property that is titled with the Upsher County Commission that will be dedicated to the city, that will thus allow, as we think of South Cano Street, when you make that turn into this alley, there will be a nice big wide alley to come into and then proceed north on, and then to proceed west on in back of the courthouse annex, to allow for much easier vehicular ingress/egress from Cano Street all the way over to Chancery Street. This is the second of two readings. It's my recommendation to the council this evening that you pass this. We have thirty days to wait for effectuation, and then after that we'll have a closing of sorts with the county commission and the bank to swap deeds.
This is an issue that's been before for some time, and we've debated it thoroughly. So I would entertain a motion to pass ordinance number Three Sixty Four on second and final reading. So motion made. Is there a second? Second. And second. Any discussion or question? All in favor of the ordinance, signify. If I say aye, opposed, no, ayes, have it. We have Three Sixty Five for first reading. Dave?
Yes, Mayor. Let me go and get the caption out there, and we've been discussing this off and on for a while as well. I'll point out some things that have changed relative to a graph that I gave you, oh, maybe six weeks ago. This is ordinance number Three Sixty Five of the city of Buchanan, and ordinance one, establishing rules and regulations regarding the prohibition or limitation of noise within the corporate limits of Buchanan; two, establishing exemptions for noise; and three, making it a criminal offense to violate the provisions of this ordinance. Let me go through the whereas paragraphs real quickly, and then I'll just point out some general things about changes to the more substantive articles of this ordinance. Whereas pursuant to the statutory provisions of Chapter Eight, Article Twelve, Section Five, Paragraph Thirteen of the West Virginia Code is amended, municipalities are authorized to adopt ordinances preventing injury and annoyance to the public or individuals from anything dangerous, offensive, or unholsome; and whereas further pursuant to the statutory provisions of Chapter Eight, Article Twelve, Section Thirteen, Paragraph Forty-Six of the West Virginia Code is amended, municipalities are authorized to adopt ordinances to protect and promote the public moral, safety, health, welfare, and good order; and whereas excessive sound and inadequately controlled noise constitute serious hazards to the public safety, health, welfare, and generally impair and negatively impact the community's quality of life; and whereas a substantial body of science and technology exists by which excessive sound may be substantially abated; and whereas the citizens of the city of Buchanan have a right to and should be insured of an environment free from excessive sound; and whereas it is the policy of the city of Buchanan to protect the health, welfare, safety, and quality of life of its citizens, and to promote an environment free from excessive sound; and whereas it is the policy of the city of Buchanan to prevent excessive sound that may jeopardize the health, welfare, or safety of its citizens, or degrade the quality of life, now therefore being ordained and enacted by the council of the city of Buchanan as follows. Under Article One, we have the declaration of policy, and the last sentence in that Article One, specifically, this ordinance shall be known as the city of Buchanan's Noise Ordinance. Article Two are a series, I guess, a dozen or more definitions. There are three new definitions that were not contained in the draft that I gave you six, eight weeks ago. Under A, Item A is a new item. A, weighted sound level, means the sound pressure level in decibels as measured on a sound level meter using the A weighting network. The level so read is designated dB/A. And then under C, that's a new item, decibel, the symbol for which is dB, means a unit for measuring the volume of a sound equal to twenty times the logarithm to the base ten of the ratio of the pressure of the sound measured to the reference pressure, which is twenty micropascals. That's twenty micronewtons per square meter.
Sound like Charlotte.
Let's not go there. Maybe Mr. Holland would like to tell us what this means.
K is a new item. Sound level meter means an instrument which includes a microphone, amplifier, RMS detector, integrator, or time-average output meter, and weighting networks used to measure sound pressure levels. Such instruments shall be used for measurement of the intensity of sound and calibrated in decibels as standardized by the American National Standards Institute. Readings shall be made on a dB scale. Okay, so that's a new definition. Moving over to Article Three, under the exemptions. If you go down to One A with me, we have added to those things that are exempt, I'll just read that section, "Noise resulting from emergency or necessary maintenance work as performed by the city of Buchanan, the state of West Virginia, or the United States of America, or any of their political subdivisions or public utility companies, including but not limited to any work of any kind on roads, streets, bridges, alleys, city-owned cemetery," has been inserted, "rights-of-way, or government-owned property." Moving over to B, under exemptions. Some new language. This was at your request, Mayor, and there's actually, I think, three different places in the ordinance where school buses are now referenced. B reads, "Noise resulting from any emergency vehicle when responding to an emergency call or acting in time of emergency, or during training exercises and maintenance, or from any school bus." We also have incorporated that in the jake-break system definition, that school buses are exempt there, too. Under, Item E, under exemptions. There's a new sentence insert that was pointed out by one of our attendees. Lawnmower racing is never deemed to be an exempt activity pursuant to the provisions of this ordinance. And I mean, I have learned that there's a decent amount of this that goes on in our town. I must not get out enough to enjoy the true fun things in life. But lawnmower racing will now not be exempt. And under G, there is an insert sentence on G relative to church bells and chimes. "To avoid any possible misunderstanding, the noise emitted from the Upsher County Courthouse bells and West Virginia Wesleyan Colleges' bells and chimes are exempt from the provisions of this ordinance." So we've added that at one party's urging. Under Article Four, under Paragraph A, under Article Four, this is a new section that is now going to quantify one of the ways by which we can measure noise. Let me explain that the ordinance that I probably took seventy-five percent of the material from that I shared with you six, eight weeks ago was the very recently enacted, I think it went into effect about the first of April, Noise Ordinance of the city of Charleston, West Virginia. In his travels and previous stays, our city treasurer administrator was aware of the Everhart, Indiana Noise Ordinance, which has more quantified facets to it. That involves the use of the actual decibel meter that Mr. Clemens has and has been talking with us about. So A is in reference to that. I've kind of extrapolated this from the Everhart, Indiana ordinance. A, "Any noise that exceeds a noise level of eighty-three decibels calculated on a distance from the point of generation of the noise source of not less than twenty-five feet shall be prima facie evidence of a noise prohibited by Article Three. Noise resulting in a decibel reading or calculation less than eighty-three decibels from twenty-five feet also constitutes a noise prohibited by Article Three if such noise otherwise constitutes a prohibited noise activity pursuant to Article Three." I'll explain more particularly what I mean in just a moment by example. Furthermore, there is no specific decibel measurement requirement to establish a violation of any noise prohibited by Article Three. I think it could stretch the bounds of our outermost imaginations to think that every time a police officer might observe a truck violating the jake-break facet of this ordinance, okay, that we're going to be able to immediately have a quick draw McGraw with the decibel gun and pull it out and quantify that noise. The police officer will know when the jake-break has been activated, and so you don't have to come to court with a decibel reading per se. However, in those instances where the noise is more continuous, loud party, something like that going on, that's the opportunity, probably the better opportunity, to establish what we refer to in the law as a prima facie case, where you can actually go not only observe it firsthand, but have this even better evidence available for the court if necessary, where you say, "Okay, that's ninety-two decibels going on with this particular noise event." That would be a piece of information that would make the case even better presented by that particular officer in the municipal court. So that's what that is all about. Under Article Five, which previously was just severability, it's now captioned federal law and severability. In this new insert, Paragraph A, "The council of the city of Buchanan specifically recognizes the existence and application of the Federal Noise, Pollution, and Abatement Act of nineteen seventy-two, popularly known and referred to as the Noise Control Act of nineteen seventy-two, Title Forty-two, United States Code, Section Four Nine Oh One, and following. The provisions of this ordinance are intended to supplement the federal law and applicable rules and regulations established therefrom and as are administered by the United States Environmental Protection." And then finally, under effective date, Article Six, "This ordinance shall be deemed effective thirty days following the second reading passage and adoption by the council of the city of Buchanan." That is July twenty-one, twenty-twelve. First reading, if you act affirmatively tonight, would be June seventh. Second reading passage and adoption would be June twenty-one. And since this is one of those ordinances that arguably touches upon the general area of coves and housing and zoning and all that kind of stuff, in exercising an abundance of caution, it won't cost as much to do a legal notice and to conduct a brief public hearing before you act on this on second reading if you act on it tonight positively on first reading. It's my recommendation that the council entertain this and pass it on first reading, and we'll go forth and report it.
Questions, Dennis?
Did I hear anything mentioned about church bells being exempt?
Church bells are exempt as long as they're part of a religious exercise. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. There's a whole bunch of exemptions in there that we've discussed previously. I didn't go over all of those, but things relative to the Strawberry Festival, things relative to events that would be sanctioned by the school system, such as the high school homecoming parade, things that occur on West Virginia Wesleyan Colleges campus that are sanctioned by the campus. That's not to say if one of the fraternity houses decide to, you know, have a blowout party and they're putting out a hundred decibels, that's not something that's sanctioned by the colleges. That would be a different situation. But, yeah.
Entertain most and adopt all. Pass ordinance number Three Sixty Five on first reading.
May?
Mayor, you've got a question?
Question on the lawnmower racing is never deemed to be an exempt activity pursuant to provisions of this ordinance. Does that include the fine tuning of these masterful motor vehicles in somebody's vacant lot? The noise is done by the fine tuning of that instead of the actual racing, which I don't know that I've ever seen any racing in Buchanan, but there has been at the county fair. I think the problem stems from this is that several people in Buchanan own these racing lawnmowers and tend to tune them at inopportune times during the day and night.
If you read that section, it talks about the If you read that section, it talks about the landscaping and lawn equipment implicitly, if not expressly, used for that purpose. So if you're using anything that would generate noise, I mean, I guess I could go out and just for the fun of it, continue to open and shut the back of my dump truck. Well, that's not part of a commercial activity at that juncture if you're just making that kind of noise. It's got to be, the activity has to be permitted in order for the particular property equipment to be justified in emitting that noise. Does that make sense? So if somebody's just out there running the lawnmower to make noise, it's not tied in with the permitted activity of landscaping, cutting your lawn. That would be a violation of the ordinance, and it would also be a good opportunity for us to use our decibel meter at that juncture.
These lawnmowers do not have blades attached to them for racing lawnmower. Therefore, I don't even consider them, except they are lawnmower frames with lawnmower motors that have been bored and stroked and everything else to give them more power.
They're not being utilized for the activity that is exempt. It would be a violation, a clear violation.
I'm sorry. I'm assuming that for many, school bus means mechanical, not the students inside.
Yes, we're talking about the vehicle, so. Although I don't know if we'd be citing too many kids yelling out of the bus window.
Motion to approve 365 on first reading. Second and a second. Further discussion?
I'd like to say that I think this is a positive step in answer to a number of concerns by citizens. I want to thank Ms. McCollough for working hard on it and, you know, wearing the hair off the dog in some cases, but I think we have something that's workable, that's measurable. I'd also would suggest that we have to give this some time so that our law enforcement officers could find efficient ways to use the tools they have. I'll also point out that I'm sure that this won't be enough for some citizens in Buchanan. Those people who can hear the clock tick four rooms away at 2:00 in the morning, there's not a decibel level that's going to be acceptable. And, but I do think this is going to be acceptable to the majority of our citizens, and I think we ought to go ahead with it.
I think there's one other component of this that I wanted to add before we go all actually vote. I think it's going to be incumbent upon us to get the information out to our citizenry, and particularly relative to trucks. While we cannot, according to the GOH, have a sign that says, "No jake brakes permitted," we can craft very carefully signings that would say, "City of Buchanan has adopted a comprehensive noise ordinance." And then you fall into that realm of, you know, ignorance is no excuse relative to
Motion made and second. Ready for question? All in favor signify sub, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? As have it. Acting on Lowell's report, it's probably a good idea to entertain a motion to approve the recommendation of the Consolidate Popeworks Board for the city's participation in the street restoration program. Motion.
So moved.
Set on. John seconded. Further discussion on that? I think Noel would pretty well describe it to us. All in favor signify sub, saying aye. Opposed, no? As have it. Brings us some comments and announcements. Let's go back to us for a change. Scott?
I hate to put you on the spot, Doug, but job well done, not only to Doug and the police officers who interact with the public frequently. All of our employees have an opportunity to have a positive impact on the citizens who live here and visitors. Job well done.
Skeeter?
John?
Interesting comparison. Again, I was just going to say that the letter we got is actually very consistent with one of the feedback I'm hearing about Doug. And I just think that that's in the spirit of community policing, and I think a good place for a lot of our folks to look, especially the officers.
Sam?
And?
David?
I just have one comment, is that the one ordinance we are looking at for the noise ordinance, and then with Mr. Moore and his concerns about the property on Barber Street, I had some phone calls this weekend also, this week, about, again, people letting dogs run, or when they're walking their dogs and they'll clean up afterward. And it really talks about, we need to be more responsible for our neighbors and for ourselves, and I just think that's important to remember, that a lot of stuff that we keep putting in orances, we wouldn't have to have. People just be more responsible and consider other people's feelings. That's all.
Anybody out there want to speak? Say anything. Okay, then, thank you all for coming.
Do you have an update on Tucker Street?
Update on Tucker Street before we adjourn. We had a meeting with, thank you, Scott, had a meeting with Cracker Tenney and one of his, I guess his right-hand helper on Wednesday. I believe it was Wednesday, and got an update.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, maybe. And they're continuing to work on, I think they're doing some cleanup there, and still anticipating receiving their license. They finished the class, but they're working on getting that license, and they've had one-on-one communication with Herb Hillary, who's the gentleman who put the cease and desist order on the door, and I expect to see that come along. Again, you know, pretty hard to put it, Dayton, on this thing, because there's all these variables that keep coming into play. But I think we keep continuing to move in the right direction, and I think Dave will agree that we felt pretty good after the meeting on Tuesday or Wednesday, whatever it was this week.
Mr. Tenney has in fact applied for his license, showed us proof of that.
Right.
We're just waiting to get it back, for him to get it back. I say we, again, it's him that's going to get it back.
Continue to wait.
And he assured us that he would be on it the moment that he got his license.
Yes, so that's, unless somebody has a question, that's all I know. I'll keep sending emails to you for sure. Anybody else? Okay, now we're adjourned. Thank you.